I'll call to order the city council regular meeting of Monday, March the 6th, and ask those in the audience who'd like to join the council and myself in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item this evening is under special business, Agenda Bill 7351, Girl Scouts 105th Birthday Proclamation. With that, I would ask Ray Lynn to join me at the podium.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Great. Do you want to sit those down so you don't have to hold them? I enjoy this every year, and this evening I have a proclamation, and proclamations have a lot of wheresses in them. And so, whereas March 12th, 2017, marks the 105th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the United States of America and the 100th anniversary of the Girl Scout Cookie Program, which is the largest girl-led business in the country, which prepares girls for their future by developing five business-building skills of goal-setting, decision-making, money-management, people's skills and business ethics, and whereas for over 100 years, Girl Scouting has helped build millions of girls and women of courage, confidence and character who make the world a better place and further advance research policy and programmatic expertise on girls' behalf. And today, Girl Scouts in Washington State reaches a diverse and plural constituency of 34,000 girls and ensures access for all regardless of their financial circumstances and a dedicated network of thousands of volunteers who share diverse backgrounds, abilities and areas of expertise to support our girls across the state. Now therefore, I Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby applaud the Girl Scouts of the United States of America for their 105 years of leadership and expertise as the voice for and of girls, and the Girl Scouts of Western Washington for providing the local support for Girl Scouting in our community, and the Girl Scouts of our city for their courage, confidence and character to act to make our world a better place in the city of Issaquah, and encourage people to join me in supporting the Girl Scouts and further to recognize the outstanding contributions that Girl Scouts of the United States of America make towards becoming tomorrow's better leaders. And witness whereof, I hereon too set my hand and seal of the Issaquah, of Issaquah the 6th day of March 2017. And so, that's a lot of words for a lot of things, and this is a proclamation that celebrates all that you do in our community, and I guess I would have to say all that your parents do also, what they do also. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Yes.
Right here.
I'm Ray Lynn Pesci Caruso. I've been in the Issaquah School District for as long, for as long as I've been alive.[300.14][300.14](Laughter). I really enjoy the programs of the art walks and Music in the Park, and I really enjoy our friendly neighbors such as Bill Ramos.[312.33][312.33](Laughter).
So shout out for you, Bill.
You go.
Great, well, that's, now what have you got here?
So we have our Tag Alongs, which is the red box, Dosie Does, the orange box, Savannah Smiles, which is the yellow box, Bin Mints, which is the green box, Tree Foils, as the blue box, our Samoas, as the purple box, and then our new Girl Scout Cookie this year, the Smores, as the brown box.
Wonderful. Which is your favorite?
The Tag Alongs.
Okay, so this is for you. Again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank you.
What am I supposed to do with those?
Eat them.[358.78][358.78](Laughter).
I'll tell you what, then. I did check beforehand, and these cookies were given to us by the Girl Scouts of America. So not coming out of any Girl Scouts pockets, but just to promote the sale, and I hope you sell a lot of these. Thank you.
Thank you.[384.21][384.21](Applause).
Our next order of business, our audience comments. While we, I'd just like to point out that in addition to audience comments at this time, we have a public hearing later in the meeting to talk about the capital budget policy, and if you would like to speak to that item, the appropriate time, the best time would be during the public hearing, which will come after approval of the consent calendar. So guidelines for public participation, citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. Please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. If you did not have an opportunity to include your email address on the sign-up sheet, you may leave that information on the clipboard, which is going to appear on the table in front of me after, after you speak. When recognized, please come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and any relationship to the city. Limit your comments to five minutes. Submit any written comments to the city clerk. A visual timer has been placed on the lectern. When it turns yellow, you are within the last minute of your comment period. If you use the full five minutes, the timer will sound to indicate the end of your allotted comment time. Again, citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes these comments seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. And with that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening.
Yes, Michelle Drovdahl and Irene Wickstrom.
I'm Michelle Drovdahl, and this is Irene Wickstrom. We're with the King County Library System. I'm the manager of the Issaquah North Bend, Snoqualmie Falls City and North Bend Libraries, and Irene is the Librarian Services Manager. And we're here today to talk about the King County Strategic Plan. It's 65% done. I don't know where they got that number, but it's a lot of work. And we're here to invite you to fill out, we have a survey that I will leave with Tisha to, to help us, to ask questions or comment on what we say today. So our first thing is, we're here to share our progress on the strategic plan, and you are our public partners, and we're a part of Issaquah, so we want to share it with you. And the plan will be finished by the end of this year, and it will be going for three, two, five years. We're thinking big.
Okay, we, KCLS participated in robust community engagement activities in the fall of 2016, and we had community surveys that responded, were responded by 3,887 people in five different languages, and also we had community conversations, and 517 people attended those and gave their input.
Okay, so we have, from this, we developed three scenarios focusing on things that are constituents identify as they would like to see addressed, not mainly library issues, but issues in their community. And our first scenario is called, is, it's very big, connections and navigation. So people have said that this addresses the increasing complexity and rapid change in life systems and processes, like starting a business or becoming a citizen, getting a job, finding a housing, and we hope that we can help identify and fully understand issues, opportunities, assets and resources relevant to this community. We want to create linkages and provide opportunities for people and organizations to discover and learn from each other. And our next one is.
Scenario number two is the sense of belonging, and the lack of a sense of community that people sometimes feel is exacerbated by the pace of life, technology and social media. And it also speaks to overcoming difference as a barrier, and also recognizing diversity as a strength in our communities. And this scenario also responds to the patterns of conflict and polarization of beliefs and values that create strife. The intent of this scenario is to be consistently purposeful about building cohesive neighborhoods and communities, and to bring divergent communities together to learn about and appreciate each other for their assets and contributions.
And our third scenario is skills building, which we feel the library is our strongest thing. We offer programs and books and technology to people to build skills and become, you know, get a good job or find a good book, all these fun stuff, which is what I like to do, bossing people, I mean, helping people find things. That's what, and so we hope that we will be part of that, facilitating the people's skills and, and, you know, bringing organizations together who can help build skills. So that is our third scenario, and we are hoping that you can be a part of it by, I will send an email to Tisha with more of what we just said about the three scenarios, and we also would like invite you to fill out the, it's a survey monkey.
So thank you so much for your time, and we'll, we'd like to come back and share with you our final strategic plan and any library service implications for the community when it's completed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and we'll be back May-June about. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn and Michelle.
Next, we have Robert Rudolph.
Good evening, Mayor Butler and city council. I'm Bob Rudolph. I live at 100 Timber Ridge Way Northwest. It's Timber Ridge at Talis. I'm a resident of Issaquah for the past few months. And I wrote you folks a letter last week, and I wanted to follow up today to bring to your attention again, an issue that could have negative impacts on the ability of residents of Issaquah to get into Seattle. Now, as most of you know, the center lanes of I-90 going across Lake Washington are going to close this summer when Sound Transit begins to develop the rail mass transit system. And when that happens, the highway I-90 is going to be restriped so that there'll be a single HOV lane going into Seattle and a single HOV lane coming out of Seattle. This is different than what currently exists, where there are two HOV lanes going in the morning, and they're reversed in the evening, two lanes coming out. So essentially, the capacity of the HOV lane on I-90 is going to be reduced by 50% when this happens. Now, the Mercer Island leadership has taken the position that Mercer Island residents should be able to use that HOV lane not only for carpools, but for single occupancy vehicles as well. And they make this assertion based on a 1976 agreement that they had with the agencies involved that allowed them to use the center I-90 bridge for the HOV lanes there for single occupancy Mercer Island traffic. But that agreement in 1976 was to terminate when the lanes were to be converted to rail, and that is what is happening now, this summer. Now, the Federal Highway Administration weighed in on this last August and sent a letter to the Mercer Island leadership saying that to allow SOV, single occupancy vehicle access to the HOV lane on I-90, or for that matter, any interstate highway, is a violation of federal law and is not allowed. They also pointed out that if SOV traffic was allowed to access the HOV lane on Mercer Island, it would create some serious operational and safety issues, mainly vehicles crossing a number of lanes of traffic to get to the HOV lane from the ramps on Mercer Island. But despite this, the Mercer Island leadership is determined to allow their residents to have what they call access and mobility. And by what that, meaning by that is, single occupancy vehicle access to the HOV lane. And they have enlisted the aid of their, of the state legislators. They have had Congressman Adam Smith set up a meeting with the governor. They have Patty Murray involved. They have lobbyists in Olympia, and they have lobbyists in Washington, D.C. on this issue. And on February 16th, they filed a lawsuit against WISDOT and Sound Transit in an effort to block the rail system until they can negotiate out an acceptable arrangement for them, which would be access to the HOV lane. And they did this by withdrawing or putting on hold their shoreline management permit. So they have filed that lawsuit. Now, there was a study done by WISDOT last year that showed that if the single occupancy vehicle access was allowed in the HOV lane on Mercer Island, it would slow the traffic in the HOV lane to levels that are unacceptable or don't meet the HOV standards for HOV lanes. And they, and, I mean, more than half the time, and in fact, almost 60% of the time, it would not meet the standards of HOV lane mobility. So if SOV access were to be allowed, it would have a negative effect on residents of Issaquah who are attempting to access Seattle in the HOV lane with a legitimate carpool. And that would be true not only for Issaquah, but also for residents in cities all along the I-90 corridor. And this issue seems to me to have flown under the radar. The only input I've seen on this has been from Mercer Island. So I urge you to provide significant input to WISDOT and Sound Transit, opposing any action which impedes the smooth flow of traffic on the I-90 HOV lane, and to oppose the use, the access of single occupancy vehicles in that HOV lane.
Your comment period is over.
And secondly, I urge you to alert other citizens, other cities along the I-90 corridor to this problem, so that they might take appropriate action for their citizens.
Thank you very much this evening.
Next, we have Liz Tiedeman.
Thank you, and good evening. For the record, my name is Liz Tiedeman, and I've recently moved to Issaquah after 28 years in Bellevue. And I have spoken to you before about a couple of subjects, and I'm going to revisit those tonight just to give you a little update and also mention one or two other things. First, I'd like to inform you of a new chapter of state law that was enacted during 2016. It's RCW 18.390, and it governs continuing care retirement communities such as Timber Ridge here in Issaquah. My family was familiar with CCRCs from decades of living on the East Coast and places where there are more of them. And after my parents moved to Timber Ridge, we were surprised by a couple of things we experienced. So we formed an association of CCRC residents and worked with our state legislators and with a trade association to enact a chapter of state law to establish unequivocally that a CCRC is not the same thing as an assisted living facility. So I just wanted to let you know that RCW 18.390 now exists, and it will go into effect in July of 2017. Second, this year, we have a kind of a cleanup bill addressing that chapter of state law. And it was good luck for me that in the legislature, the public hearing on that bill in the House Healthcare Committee was the same day as a public hearing on another bill near and dear to my heart, and that would be House Bill 1076, brought forward by 5th District Representative Paul Graves, and it has to do with home-prepared meals being served at, in congregate settings. Representative Graves brought that forward because of what my group has experienced here in Issaquah, and also what he heard from other organizations in the 5th District. So I'm very hopeful that 1076 will be passed. It's right now on the second reading calendar. It's already passed the House Healthcare Committee, House Appropriations, and hopefully it'll get voted by the House over to the Senate. So I'm looking forward to there being a public hearing in the Senate also. It was just dumb luck for me that both those public hearings were on the same day. I have a question that I just want to name out loud, and I don't wish anybody to research and answer for this for me. If my group becomes prohibited from using the community hall because we're not a 501(c) designated entity, because that's the direction Issaquah is going right now, where in Issaquah will people be able to get a meal on a Thursday, a Saturday or a Sunday? So I just name that that question exists. Finally, I will be curious, now that I'm an Issaquah resident, to learn and to research how it is that the city administrator's office has the authority to decide that the community hall will be used only by 501(c) entities that show proof of insurance naming Issaquah as a named insured. So I really appreciate the transparency of the online codes and all kinds of agendas and minutes and so on, and it's very possible that this has come forward from a committee to the city council and so on, but I'll be interested to look into that. And finally, I will say, I have only in the past two weeks completed my move from Bellevue to Issaquah, and it will take me a little while to learn my way around as a resident. I want to say that I live with an enormous amount of fatigue, because it's not only from the move, but for the 10 years prior to that, I was one of Washington's 800,000 unpaid family caregivers. My parents may have resided in a retirement community where they had care and services, but that does not mean there are not family caregiving responsibilities. And my parents had moved across the country to be near my brother and me and their now adult grandchildren, so we bothered to show up just about every day. I'm tired from all of that. So regretfully, I won't be staying for the whole meeting tonight, and I look forward to hearing a full meeting in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mitra Mohandesi.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for your time here tonight. My name is Mitra Mohandesi, and I am a resident of outside of Issaquah, Miramont area. And I'm here tonight to thank you on behalf of Imagine Housing for your contributions and your funding for the affordable housing on the east side. I serve on the board of Imagine Housing. Because of your arch contributions, Imagine Housing will be able to start this year construction of 63 affordable apartment units in Bellevue. And with this project, we'll be able to remove 31 homeless families from streets and shelters and place them in permanent housing. This project called 30 Bellevue will serve people earning less than 60% of the median income for the area, and will also be featuring supportive services, which really helps maintain the stability of home and family for the residents of the apartments. Also, your arch contributions fund innovation. With about $500,000 in pre-development funding, we are able to make progress on development of 257 units of mixed-income transit-oriented apartment homes in Estera Park, which is in Overlake Village, in Redmond. And Estera Park, in addition to a YMCA which, with Child Care Center, which serves the whole community, will also house a mixed income of folks. So it will truly feature the diversity that the project seeks to create with the help of Redmond. So thank you very much, and I would like to urge you to please support Arch's recommendation to use these funds for the pre-development of Estera Park and also the permanent capital for the 30 Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek Franklin.
However, I'm here tonight as I serve as the Chair of the Issaquah Human Services Commission, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the commission and its members. The commission's work includes making recommendations to support the city's objectives regarding its commitment to supporting the human service needs of Issaquah residents. Part of our work includes reaching out to organizations funded through city grants and listening to community members about any emergent human service needs. In doing that work, we have recognized that recent messages from the new federal administration have had a disproportionate impact on many community members that are immigrants and/or members of several protected classes. This impact pertains to our work, both as commission members for the city that apply the city's stated policies of nondiscrimination and tolerance, and in terms of how funded organizations may need to reprioritize or enhance their services to address these changes. From this perspective, the Issaquah Human Services Commission wishes to thank the council for its December 5, 2016 proclamation encouraging the reduction of intolerance towards others of different backgrounds or beliefs and establishing tolerance awareness there. And we thank the mayor for his mayor's message on immigration and support of the immigrant members of the community and the principles of inclusion, welcoming and anti-discrimination. And we wish to commend the mayor and other council members that have joined other elected leaders from across the county and signed on to the King County pledge to building inclusive communities. So on behalf of the Human Services Commission, thank you for your support of the principles of equality and justice and nondiscrimination for all members of the Issaquah community.
Derek, thank you very, very much, and for the good work of our Human Services Commission.
No one else has signed up to speak?
Is there anyone who has not signed up desiring to speak this evening? Second call, third and final call. Anyone else?
The public hearing comes later.
That the public hearing comes later. Right. Seeing no one, then audience comments are closed, and we'll move now to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember Batiste.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Economic Development Council Board Meeting on February 28th, which included an economic update, client cluster strategy success- an economic update, client cluster strategy success story from a group called Atlas Workbase, and a panel presentation, which was community and technical colleges. And the name of the presentation was Engines of Talent Development and Critical Partners in Economic Development. It was a very important conversation about how critical community and technical colleges are in economic development, and all of the funding cuts that they're dealing with through the legislature, and how tough that issue is becoming. The next EDC meeting will be June 14 in Bellevue. I'll be attending the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee tomorrow evening, and Tola will give, I'm sure, another update about that. The King County Conservation District Committee will be meeting on March 15 in Renton. And the Eastside Human Services Forum, the next board meeting will be March 22. The board has been sending a lot of updates that they're working hard to contact legislative district senators and representatives about different issues and bills associated with the Eastside Human Services Forum legislative agenda, very long list. And just a couple of announcements through that group. There's a resource fair in Bellevue at the Bellevue Library from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on March 28, and that's where people can go and learn about all of the different resources that are available in our community. And then it was great to hear the library representatives come and speak. Through the King County Library Association, the King County Heroin and Prescription Opiate Addiction Task Force Program series, they're doing a lot of different events at various dates and various libraries, and you can learn more at kcls.org. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'll talk about the council infrastructure committee. And first to note is the March meeting has been moved. It's not going to be on the 16th as usual. It'll be on March 28. Sorry for the inconvenience of change for folks, but get that word out as quick as possible. The agenda hasn't been set yet for that. Our February 22 meeting, we had a number of items on there. First one was complete streets. And that was a little different than we normally do, and this was kind of council direction. So I'm coming back to you with some information here and see if it's good enough for you, if you will. Because the complete streets previously, the administration would just decide which projects to do, and we wanted to have some council touches on that. So coming through infrastructure, we went through a process and selected the projects to be done under the complete streets. Once selected, the main one was finishing the last link on Juniper Street. There's one last chunk of lack of sidewalk that doesn't connect everything. And that one piece, we figured would take most of the funding, complete streets this year. If there was any leftover, the next project, they would start repairing the sidewalks around Pickering Barn that had been raised up by the trees and so forth there. That would involve some tree removal. So the question I pass out to you now to think about is, we asked about, do we have to provide an agenda bill and have the whole council vote on that, or just bring that back to everyone, let you know, and go with that? So that's kind of the decision, and if any other committee member would want to say something on that, you're welcome to. We good? Okay.
Thank you.
Question. And then next item is AB 7308 Gilman Boulevard, which is on the agenda for tonight, so we'll talk about that later. Also, traffic calming in the East Sunset area. That is just starting the conversation. Nothing's decided. It's just starting, opening up to the public and starting that conversation. And the item that was on our agenda there, Transportation Mobility Board, was not taken up. It'll be moved to our next meeting on the 28th. And I'd like to thank the administration. They came up with a nice project update report for us, which we've been doing, but more verbally. Now we've got a nice set of all the projects listed out. You can see what was done last month or coming up this month, or any updates, and the public appreciated that. And the only thing we asked them to add on to that list was all projects that were covered by other than the city, such as developers and so forth, that were doing projects that were in our infrastructure as well. Concluding there, we went, the Regional Transit Committee met on February 23, and we'll meet again on March 15 in King County Council Chambers, working on the development of the program of work, the draft there. And it was very well received, written in a way of creating a great partnership between the jurisdictions and metro, much more so than ever before. So very excited about that. Also, the Emergency Management Advisory Council, the next meeting is on this Wednesday, the 8th. I'll be down in the Emergency Management Center in Renton. And the Eastside Transportation Partnership, next meeting is this Friday, the 10th, in Bellevue. I'm working on the planning committee to set the agenda and the high priority issues we want to tackle this year. concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Thursday, there was a meeting of the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board. And at our last council meeting, I mistakenly said that the board would be taking up the issues of the regional centers framework update starting in our March meeting. I was a month early. We'll take up that conversation in April, and that'll span April, May, and June with a planned action in our June meeting to make a recommendation to the executive board. But what we did cover in this meeting, we had a great presentation from representatives from the Tacoma and Pierce County Department of Health, and another representative from the Kitsap Health District. And they gave us an overview of health and planning in our region. So the planning that we do, but health-related issues, they provided information about health outcomes are interrelated with planning, and how communities are using health in planning, and how health may be considered during the upcoming update to Vision 40. I found that to be a really good presentation. We also had a discussion about affordable housing. We had, and there were three housing professionals with prepared material, including Arthur Sullivan of Arch, and the two other gentlemen were amazingly knowledgeable as well. And they talked about new housing developments being built in the region and different approaches that cities are using to increase affordable housing through incentives and other planning. Really, the purpose of the discussion was to set the stage for looking at the housing policies, again, for the upcoming update to Vision 2040. And anybody interested in this conversation, it is about affordable housing. It is available. It's been recorded, and it is available online through the PSRC website. I can forward you information if you'd like. I did find it very helpful. Since we are updating our housing policy and our housing strategy this year, of which affordable housing is part of it, I know it's an issue on many people's minds, and so I can send you that information. I think it was worth the time. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz?
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Council Services and Safety Committee will meet next Tuesday, March 14, 6:30 p.m. here in Council Chambers. The agenda is still to be determined. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will meet Wednesday, I wrote down the wrong date, March, well, if Tuesday is March 14, then Wednesday is probably March 15, if my math is correct. And that will be in Renton City Hall. Before that, the SCA Pre-PIC Workshop is particularly useful, and I don't normally read a lot of verbiage from SCA, but let me read this out. "We're going to cover regional centers' policy framework. SCA will be hosting a Pre-PIC Workshop to review proposed changes to the Vision 2040 regional centers' policies under consideration at the Puget Sound Regional Council. Focusing the region's growing population and employment into designated growth and manufacturing centers is a key strategy under Vision 2040. A stakeholder working group formed to review the center's policy framework recently issued a final report recommending changes to the designation criteria for regional and subregional centers. If adopted, the new center's policies will inform future planning and investments at the regional and local level. More information about the regional center's policy update can be found on the project website."
Did you repeat the date?
That is Wednesday, March 15, and the Pre-PIC meeting starts at 6:00. That's on the seventh floor in the conference room, which is on the same level as Council Chambers, but it's not in Council Chambers. And I mention this because, of course, everyone is free to attend, and this isn't, we could have, frequently, our neighbors to the north, Semamish and Redmond, send lots of people to these meetings. And for all of us who are interested in this topic, I think it's going to be a very interesting presentation. In addition to that, talking about the meeting that's then going to be held at 7:00, we're going to be looking at the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Committee and King County Flood Control District Advisory Committee appointments. Then we will be talking about PSRC Regional Economic Strategy. There's going to be an upcoming economic forum in, I don't have the date in front of me, but I believe it's April. We are going to have a discussion of the proposed cultural access sales tax, which would affect some arts organizations potentially in Issaquah. That is, I believe that vote is, if all goes as planned, King County Council will be enabling that vote at this week's King County Council meeting. But the details of what that cultural access sales tax looks like, we haven't yet seen at SCA, and so I'm very interested. And then we'll also be having a lengthy conversation about 2017 work plans for RPC, RWQC, which is Regional Water Quality Council, and then RTC. So we'll be interested to see how those work plans dovetail with each other and back out to our cities. And of course, there will be reports generated from that meeting as part of the minutes from PIC. So while there are not a lot of meaty action items for this upcoming SCA meeting, there's a number of things that are of particular interest to the city. I see Councilmember Winterstein poised to ask a question about SCA?
I just want to double-check the date. I actually have the PIC for this Wednesday, in two days.
So did I. That's why I asked.
On the 8th.
Did I? That would be the second Wednesday of the month. Boy, oh, boy. You would think that I, as PIC Chair, would have known the fact that I was having a meeting in 48 hours. It now comes back to me that, in point of fact, yes, right. And I apologize for that. I, you know, just panicked when I saw that I had the wrong date listed in there. I apologize. Thank you so much, Councilmember Winterstein, for correcting me. That would be this Wednesday. Again, the Pre-PIC meeting starts at 6:00, Renton City Hall, seventh floor, conference room. Then GMPC isn't meeting again until May, and the Regional E911 Strategic Plan Leadership Group is not meeting until June. This concludes my lengthy and sometimes inaccurate report.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber?
No report this evening. Us.
Councilmember Polly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Cascade Water Alliance's annual meeting with the mayor last week, and there is an item from there about water reuse that I will bring up to council for good of the order. The next Cascade Water Alliance Resource Committee meeting is this Thursday, March 9, at 2:00. We'll be looking at some contract awards, an update on the water quality monitoring plan, a policy revision on property sales, and some project updates. Let's see, the chamber board meeting was on February 17, and it was held at the newly renovated McDonald's. In case you haven't been there, it's all changed. They had several items that I thought our council would be interested in hearing about. Their Government Affairs Committee is supporting the $1.5 million request for funding for the improvements at 12th and SR 900. They had a substantive discussion about power outages, power reliability, and were confirming their support for the Energize Eastside projects. Their concern is primarily that upgrades may not keep up with growth, especially with the growth rates we're experiencing right now. On tourism, they noted that we were the only state in the nation without a state-level funded tourism program, and that there are some bills moving through the House and Senate now that they are supporting. They also talked about film works. They are lobbying to get some Issaquah locations added to lists for movie shoots. And the last item that I thought was of interest to our council is, they gave us an update on the salmon days, and they had very, very kind words of appreciation for the retiring committee chair, Aileen Barber, who served for 10 or 20 years, a very, very long time. I did attend the five-chamber breakfast in Issaquah on Friday, March 3. The next Issaquah Chamber luncheon event is March 9 at the Holiday Inn. The next chamber board meeting is Friday, March 17. And there is an EFOR, Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting this Thursday at 4:00. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President Goodman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Land and Shore Committee met last Thursday, March 2, and we had several items. We had, as usual, our standing moratorium update item. We talked about that significantly recently at the council level, so we didn't have really much there to talk about. We also got an update on where we are with the Sustainable Building Action Strategy, which was a council goal, and that will be coming back to the council later. We just provide a little bit of feedback. Agenda Bill 7215, this is the ninth major amendment to Issaquah Highlands Two-Party Development Agreement. This is the Polygon Northwest Proposal for the 100 TDRs that we talked about at our last council meeting. We primarily talked about affordable housing, and there was a, rather than just one option, there was a list of, I believe it was four, five, five options. And so we talked about, we were happy that we had some options, and that agenda bill is coming back to committee at our next meeting to talk some more. And we asked for some more information, mostly a little bit more analysis. They're also bringing back more, staff is bringing back more information on how that proposal squares with city code about making sure that it doesn't overtax infrastructure regarding the extra TDRs that's proposed using. Then we discussed vertical mixed use, the analysis that is going on during the moratorium along with several work items, and we got a little bit of information on that. That's going to also keep coming back to us until it's ready to come to council. Then we had two action items. Agenda Bill 7270, 2016 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. And yes, that was 2016, but we did finally get it over the finish line with the recommendation. I believe that comes to our next council meeting. And then we also addressed Agenda Bill 7330, which is the 2017 docket, or list of comprehensive plan amendments, and that will also be coming forward with a recommendation to the full council. The next Land and Shore Committee meeting is Thursday, April 6, here in Council Chambers, 6:30, and we do not have an agenda yet. That's my report.
Thank you. There will not be an executive session held this evening. I participated in the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board meeting on February the 23rd, where information was provided on the draft 2018, 2019 biannual budget and work plan. And finally, I attended a new resident orientation at Lakely Hall in the Issaquah Highlands on March 2, and welcomed a number of new residents to Issaquah. That concludes my report. We'll now move to the consent calendar, and I would ask if the accounts payable and payroll for March 6 have been reviewed.
They have.
Thank you. With that, I'd ask the clerk to read the consent calendar into the record.
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of the accounts payables and payroll of March 6, 2017. Items B through D seeks approval of the minutes of the City Council Committee Work Session of February 13, the special meeting of February 21, and the regular meeting of February 21. Item E, AB 7282, Arch 2017 Proposed Work Program and Budget, seeks approval. Item F, AB 7304, Downtown Streetscape Plan, seeks referral to Council Committee Work Session. AB 7312, 2017 Regional Agenda, seeks referral to Council Committee Work Session. AB 7320, Teamsters Collective Bargaining Agreement, 2016 to 2019, seeks to approve contract and adopt ordinance. If adopted, the ordinance will be assigned, number 2794. And Item I, AB 7334, South Cove Water Meter Replacement Project, seeks to award bid. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Does anyone desire to remove any item on the consent calendar for separate consideration? Councilmember Goodman?
I would move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second?
Council President Goodman?
I just wanted to make a comment. On the consent agenda, Agenda Bill 7312 is the 2017 Regional Agenda Bill, and it is to refer to the Council Committee Work Session next week. And if you haven't had a chance to read through the agenda bill, it is the proposed regional agenda for 2017. agenda for 2017, and there are changes, but there are not track changes, so we cannot tell what the changes are. But I've asked administration to include in the packet that gets posted for the public and us, a version that has track changes, so please look for that.
Thank you. And with that, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar is submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to public hearing, Agenda Bill 7306, Capital Budget Policy. And with that, our Finance Director, Jen Olson, will provide for a short presentation before I open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Tonight's public hearing is on...
Jen. I'm having trouble hearing you. Maybe the mic, if you could get that.
I'll just get closer. Is that better?
That is a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Tonight's public hearing is to take public comment on the proposed capital budget policy. This is a section of the financial policies. Earlier this year, the administration proposed capital budget policy updates to the city council. Provided with that was a timeline and a pathway forward for improving our capital budget policy. First, that is to occur before we work on improving the CIP development process, along with better engagement in the community. There have been some previous discussions with regards to the capital budget policy. Starting in January, the policy was presented to the committee of the whole. The council has conducted a work session on February 13th to start discussions on those proposed updates. Tonight is the public hearing to take public testimony, and then there are two other proposed sessions for this particular policy update. The proposed policy came to the city council. It included updates with regards to capital budget objectives, the CIP timeframe, and proposed changes to that. Some new sections of the capital budget policy, which included project ranking criteria that is based on a set of council-provided or council-adopted rankings that would help administration to place projects into the CIP. There's strengthened language in the capital budget policy that refers to sources and uses, and that's the funding, as well as the costs in the policy, and then efforts to improve our citizen engagement for this particular policy. That public engagement effort, then, is for better reach-in and reach-out. There's a two-year transition for the CIP process for improvement, starting in 2017 for the 2018 capital budget, and we wanted to ensure that we had engagement before, during the capital budget development process. So with that, the proposed policy has been published, and again, the council's been discussing that. Tonight's public hearing is to take public comment, and so that concludes my very brief presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions of the council afterwards.
Are there any questions of Jen before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, then, the same rules that I mentioned for audience comments pertain to this public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing at 7:54. 7:54. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No.
Is there anyone who has not signed up who would like to speak? I suspected, when you asked about the public hearing, that you were here for that.
Yes, exactly. Jen Gray, I'm a resident of Providence Point Community. My address, 22417 Southeast 36th Lane. And I'm here for consideration of putting our capital, our traffic signal project on the list, top of the list. As you know, the traffic from Simamish has increased over the years. I've lived, we bought in 2010, and it is even more impactful now. It is very difficult to make a right-turn lane, much less a left-turn lane, when you want to leave Providence Point. In addition, people are not able to cross the street anymore. It is much too hazardous. There's pedestrian warning signs, but as you know, when you're making the turn past the city church property coming down the hill, they're going way too fast for anybody to have a chance to survive that trevers across the street. It's not that far, but it is very, very dangerous. Back in 2010, or 10, not 2010, about 10 years ago, there was plans drawn up for this project, and all they need is to be brought up to a current code for traffic signalization for the street width, et cetera, the storm drains. And I would, I actually sent a letter to Mayor Butler with a copy to the city council to request that if there are any funds available this year to bring those plans up to speed, that would be terrific, and then to fund our project next year. I would greatly appreciate any consideration you would give for this project. We have 1,400 residents that are going in and out of that, ingress and egress, and so it is very important that we have the ability to get out safely. Appreciate your concern and any support you can give to this endeavor. Thank you.
Jen, thank you very, very much. Is there anyone who has not signed up to speak, desiring to speak this evening? Second call, third and final call, and with that, we'll close the public meeting at 7:57. And Jen, do you have some additional comments?
No, Mayor, I have no additional comments.
Are there questions of our Finance Director? Council President Goodman.
Thank you. I'm not sure we wanted to close it, so I'm going to move to continue the public hearing to the April 3rd, 2017 council meeting, to allow the opportunity for additional public comment.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Council President Goodman.
I don't have a discussion or a question, I just have a comment. I wanted to thank Jen, primarily for the really excellent materials that you presented to the council on the capital budget policies. I remarked before, and I'll say it again, that it was maybe one of the, probably maybe the best presentation that we've ever had, with the materials focused on the specific policy questions that we were to answer. And then I wanted to thank Emily Moon for guiding us through that. It was very, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or discussion? All those in favor of... What are we doing here? Continuing the public hearing to the April 3rd, 2017 council meeting to allow the opportunity for additional public comments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, Agenda Bill 7308, Gilman Boulevard Improvements, SR900 to Issaquah Creek. We'll kick things off with a short presentation, and then I'll turn it over to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee to present it before the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Kurt Seaman, Transportation Manager here at the city. I just, I think, as the mayor suggested, Councilmember Ramos will probably follow up with what we discussed at the Infrastructure Committee, but I wanted to give the full counsel, just, I don't really have a slideshow or a presentation, but just to talk briefly about what we're looking to accomplish on Gilman, and what the purpose of this work is, and what we think the future holds out there, and why it makes sense to do the work now. So we know that Gilman is, the Gilman Corridor is one of the prime major east-west corridors in Issaquah, serving a large number of businesses, as well as an increasing number of residents along that corridor. And we know that, that as growth continues and as properties redevelop along there, that the future of Gilman will be different from the present Gilman that we know. So the real issue here is how do we ensure that we keep all that's good about Gilman and maintain the positive character of that corridor, and while planning for and accommodating the future? And I think more specifically, how do we ensure that that corridor, from a transportation standpoint anyway, that it supports all modes of travel, both for businesses and increasing number of residents, all modes of travel, including non-motorized pedestrian bicycles, of course transit, as well as vehicles? And then finally, I think, how do we plan for this corridor? We know that very soon here, we'll be starting working with the state on the IJR, Intersection Justification Report, that's going to look at Front Street and a potential second crossing of I-90, probably in the vicinity of 10th or 12th. So that's, and that's something else that's happening along that corridor. And also, just going out even further, we know that light rail is coming to Issaquah, and we want to be sure we start thinking about that and how light rail may fit into this whole area. So, and so, so that's sort of as a background, and then more specifically with what we're, what you have in front of you tonight. Grab my notes here. So we've broken the proposal to you into two parts, two phases, as you will, 2017 phase and a two, which is what we are asking for your approval of tonight, and then a future 2018 phase, which is not part of tonight's agenda bill, but we'll be coming back to you later in the process to talk about that. But in this 2017 phase, we'll be primarily focused on gathering, getting the facts, presenting factual data to the community. That may include modeling, some preliminary look, looks at what's possible out there, what the opportunities are, what the constraints are. So, but this is very much in this first phase, a data gathering and community input, a large community input component to this work effort in 2017. We've done some survey already along that corridor, and Mr. Ramos can speak more to this, is what happened in, in our discussions with the Infrastructure Committee, but we originally had scoped the project to be from, roughly from the bridge to 900, SR900, and in further conversations with council, with the committee, we all agreed that it made the most sense to look at the entire corridor from, from Front Street to SR900. And that's not meant to exclude the portion east of front, that's still a portion we'll be considering as well. But the primary focus and what is in front of you tonight is the approving preliminary work in 2017 for the Gilman Corridor from SR900 to Front Street. We originally asked for, so it's, it may be a little, we put a table in there at council's request to help, hopefully help explain the dollars there, but, so initially, we'd asked for $50,000 for the work from the bridge to SR900. We had already done the survey for that portion of the corridor. When we're looking to extend the work from the bridge to Front Street, we're expecting that that could, our budget, we're budgeting for another $125,000 for that work, which would include survey and some additional study and preliminary work. So the request for you tonight is for the $50,000 originally asked for, plus the $125,000 additional, for a total of $175,000. So that...
Thank you, Kurt. This is coming back from the Infrastructure Committee. Bill?
Yeah, and thank you, Kurt, that summed it up pretty well. It did go through committee a couple times, because there were some questions on, on what was, what were the, the length of the project, what it really included, and realized after some discussion was that the shorter project was in place for $50,000, because we had already gathered a lot of the data there, and so it could move forward fairly quickly and fairly inexpensively. But that didn't, for us, didn't follow the logic when it's really a corridor, and it would, we should look at the whole piece. The drawback to that is it's going to cost more, because there's more data to gather on the piece, and we don't have it already, and also add length of time. So this project goes from $50,000 and finishes, you know, earlier this year and start things versus $175,000, and, and be able to really roll into 2018 with, with all that data in place. So it extends a lot of that into '18 versus the end of '17. But saying, I think, really will give us a good hold on the future, what we need with all that data gathered. When redevelopment in that area happens and those kinds of things, we'll know what we want as a city, and then we all have those answers, and we won't have to be wondering piecemeal when someone develops something here, or someone develops something there. So with that in mind, I'd like to move to approve the project area to include Gilman Boulevard improvements from SR900 to Front Street, and authorize an allocation of $175,000 from the Street Improvement Fund balance, ending balance, and direct the Finance Director to include the $175,000 in a subsequent 2017 budget amendment.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, then, all those in favor of approving the project area to include Gilman Boulevard improvements from SR900 to Front Street, and authorize the allocation of $175,000 from the Street Improvement Fund, ending fund balance, and direct the Finance Director to include $175,000 in subsequent 2017 budget amendments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you very much.
Moving now to Agenda Bill 7333, 2017 Budget Amendments. Jen, you're awful busy tonight.
Thank you again, Mayor. This agenda item is to address budget appropriation adjustments that are necessary, that would cover expenditures and revenues that we hadn't anticipated in the 2017 budget adoption process. The budget was adopted in 2016 at the end of December with Agenda Bill 7243. There are some proposed budget amendments to cover unforeseen revenue sources and expenditures, and state statutes certainly guide us with regards to budgets in code cities and define public hearing requirements. There are a number of budget amendments based on the, on different types according to state statute. Amendments for emergencies, where there is not a need for any notice or public hearing that's required. Amendments for increasing adopted appropriation levels, and that particular type of budget amendment requires a public notice and public hearing. There are amendments for receiving more revenue, where no notice or public hearing is required, and that one is primarily if the city council chooses to spend those resources in that current year. So with this proposed budget amendment for 2017, the administration is recommending that the city council hold a public hearing at its next council meeting, and to set that for March 20th, 2017. So with that, the proposed ordinance is with the agenda bill, and I'd be happy to answer any questions of the council.
Are there questions of Jen? Paul?
Calling on me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sorry. All right, thank you. So I know we're going to be addressing this again in the future, and I think some, I'll just make a request for some information, make sure we have it later on as well. I think the action in front of us, we haven't really made, we haven't made a motion yet, because the action is going to be to set... because the action is going to be to set the public hearing, I believe, so I'm just going to ask some questions about the content. And, and Jen, if you don't have it right now, just later on, in the, in the, on page 153 of 175 in the packet, in the Capital Special Projects Fund, number 301, there, I just don't understand the description of that, adjustments in revenue. So, I'll, I'd just like to get some clarification on that. If it's easy now, that's great. I can put these in email to you as well. I have a few just related to some of the changes that are in there. A, a few other questions, I mean. So, do you want to tackle that, or you want me to get, we want to do it later? We can do it later.
If you would like to send an email with all the questions, then I can respond a little bit more efficiently, but I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, yeah, and, and you're going to see questions as well related to the water fund. I think the description of the work, I just don't, just isn't clear in the information. And by, and by the way, most, what, what we're looking at is every, whether it's a change to revenue or expenditures in any of the funds, every one of these lines have a description. And for the most part, they're very helpful, and I appreciate that. And as I had gone through them, there was just a couple of them that I was seeking a little bit more information about. And then, and then back fur, back, back up the page, back up the document, of course, the majority, a, a, a good number of changes were made relating to the general fund. And I think, and, and there's a couple that are in expenditures that are listed about, they say the 2016 appropriation for, so I assume that those all mean that those were originally budgeted in 2016, they were not expended, and now we're, and they're really just, we're kind of re-appropriating funds for projects that weren't, that were previously authorized, but we did not authorize their spending in 2017. So, we're just rolling those forward.
That's correct. I can, I can answer that. A reappropriation would mean that because spending ends at the end of the year.
Right.
And so, just to get that spending allocation into the, the current year is essentially what those, some of those line items are.
Okay, yeah, and, and thank you. I just wanted to be clear about that. And those were my questions. Thank you.
Bill?
I think I'm, I'll send some more in email also. I guess just went over the top of my head, just, just looking is the Mallory Bay property is in many places and very hard to follow, so I don't know if there's a better way to be able to follow all the things involved with that one, one, one piece might be easier to, to see. I know it's in a lot of different funds. And then just, and most of them, these are ones we've, we've, you know, directed the city to spend, but there's a some, a few in here that I don't remember, like, authorizing to spend, so I'd be, have some questions on those, and I'll email them to you. So, thank you.
I would say, any council member that has questions, if you would email Jen, and then when we put the responses together, we'll provide it, those responses to the entire council. Mary Lou?
Jen, just a question on adjustment to expenditures, so I guess it's in the general fund. The professional services DSD, I'm not sure I quite understood your answer to Council Member Winterstein. So, it's a appropriation for the tile slide expenses. So, was that budgeted in 2016 but not spent?
Yes.
Okay, so really, it doesn't, I guess I'm trying to understand if, if we get to the end of the year and we didn't spend it, it, it did not show in our ending fund balance, then? Like, are we spending down our ending fund balance, I guess is what I'm getting at?
If, if money has been budgeted in a, in a current year and it's not spent, then that impacts the ending fund balance positively. And so, this, when there's a reappropriation ask, then it's, it is going to affect the, the fund balance in the way it had been intended.
So, if we didn't spend it in 2016, the ending fund balance we saw at budget session is now $750,000 higher?
No.
No.
What that means is that, that, that was part of the reason why ending fund balance essentially was what it was at the end of the year.
Okay, so I think when we looked at the 2017 budget, the original proposed budget was going to have a $2.3 million drawdown. And then when council went through the whole thing, we got it to, I don't know, 700,000?
651,000.
Yeah, there you go, close. So, then what, does this mean that at, at budget time, we should have been looking at a $3 million proposed drawdown? I'm just trying to figure out if this is, I'm not really sure I understand how this works.
Well, what I think I can do better is I can kind of walk you through the beginning and ending fund balances when I respond to those questions, if that's-
I'll just put it in that email.
Okay, thank you.
Other, other questions? Stacy?
Thanks. I would move to set the public hearing regarding the proposed 2017 budget amendments for the March 20, 2017 city council meeting.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any additional discussion or questions? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of setting the public hearing regarding the 2017 budget amendments for March 20th, 2017 city council meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 7283, 2016 Arch Fund Trust Fund. This is, welcome. This is coming back from Services and Safety, and we'll kick it off with a short presentation from the Executive Director of Arch.
Hello, Mayor and council. You have in your packet materials that have been prepared through the process that we go through annually to review requests for funding. This process has gone through the review of, yes?
Can you introduce yourself to the folks watching?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Arthur Sullivan, Program Manager of Arch.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, the process we go through includes review by your staff, a citizen advisory board with citizens from across East King County, and also the Arch Executive Board before we come back to you, with funding requests based on funding levels that you had approved in previous years. There are two projects that are presented in the packet that you have. Both are by Imagine Housing. The first is 30 Bellevue, which is actually a project that we partially funded last year. They have managed to address all the issues that were raised and have moved that project forward. And this year, we're happy to say that our award, combined with funding applications to other funders, looks like that project is essentially fully funded and is expected to continue this year, assuming funding approved by the Arch member cities. We did go through a unique situation with this project at the very end of the year, after the election. Lot of uncertainty about where the tax code will go. And one of the primary funding sources we're often trying to leverage are the agencies that we support, our federal tax credits. In this project, we have several charts that are included along with the memo, and we'll show you that 13 million of the $24 million of expenses are from tax credits. The value of those credits is based on investors. With the changes or potential changes in the tax code, that has potentially reduced. So, we have added a, above and beyond the request, a contingency in the event the tax credit value, by the time they close the project this summer, has decreased, or what it's sort of at today versus where it was last year. Then we would, we added a special condition that we would share with the county, our share being up to 400,000, but it would be, go through an iterative process and also go back to the Arch Executive Board for review to make sure that any other funding savings could be used before allocating any funds, and it would only be used primarily for contingents, construction contingency. So, it's our response to a unique situation. We're hoping those funds may not be used, but we have put in protections and are proposing being able to go back to the Executive Board for that additional funding. Other than that, this project has gone through all the city approvals, and so is now just in the permitting process. And it's an exciting project to include housing for families, homeless, and also persons with developmentally disabled. The other project is a little more speculative of this nature, but we're very excited. We think that a number of the lessons that we've learned from your actions up in Issaquah Highlands might be applied to this site. That might find ways to create local value, to significantly reduce the land value, and given that, we are proposing a preliminary funding award, but requiring to come back next fall with a complete process and a complete application to us and other funders. There, there is an opportunity to do well over 100 affordable units in one development immediately adjacent to the overlay parking ride. So, a very, very unique situation. And so, we wanted to sort of show our preliminary support through this preliminary commitment. Funds would not be able to be expended, it's sort of a reservation. If they can pull together the rest of the project, they would come back for further funding, similar to what they did with 30 Bellevue. And again, there are a number of conditions that go with the funding recommendations from the advisory board and the executive board that are included in your packet, and then other summary information about the two projects, as well as a summary of projects funded over the years from your support and other council support. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Questions of Arthur? This is coming back from Services and Safety. Tola?
It is. On February 14th, 2017, and I'm fairly confident of that date, the Council's Services and Safety Committee met and discussed Agenda Bill 7283. After a brief presentation and discussion, the committee unanimously recommended approval of the proposed resolution authorizing use of the city's housing trust fund monies for the 30 Bellevue and Estera Block 6B projects as recommended by the Arch Executive Board. The committee requested placement of this item under regular business, as we saw it this evening. So, I therefore move to approve Resolution Number-
2017-01?
2017-01, authorizing the duly appointed administering agency for Arch to execute all documents necessary to enter into agreements for the funding of affordable housing projects as recommended by the Arch Executive Board, utilizing funds from the city's housing trust fund.
Second.
Moved and seconded twice. Questions or discussion? Tola?
I just want to thank Arthur for coming in and explaining this. It's, we felt this was, this looked like particularly worthwhile use of monies. Of course, this is money that was already budgeted, so it's not like there's new, there's new allocations associated with this. So, this is one of the easiest decisions I've had to make, recommendations I've had to make in a while.
Right. Other, Paul?
Thank you, and thank you, Arthur, as well. I appreciate the material that, that's provided, that's in the packet, and I want to just draw the, my fellow council members' attention to the table that's on, it's Exhibit 4 in this bill. It's titled Arch Housing Trust Fund 2016, leveraging funds dot, dot. And as I've continued to study and try to understand all the elements of how, of, of what Arch does, and, but also previously spending two years on the Joint Recommendations Committee, which does the approval, you'll see a line item in that table, which is on page 172 of 175 in the packet. There's a line item from King County. It says HOF slash home slash CDBG. And both of these projects have numbers there. One, one of them is 1.8 million, another one is 4.3 million dollars. And that's, those are the funds that the JRC approves, so that's kind of how it ties to some of these. But the reason I like this, this table, because I think we all need to be more aware of how many different parties have to come together to do projects of this magnitude and for this purpose. So, you know, the line at the top is Arch for each one of those. Okay, that's the consortium that, that we're all part of, and Arthur represents. And then there's federal, there's the CDBG money, you know, from King County. There's also in the second project that we're, that's speculative, there's a potential $7 million from King County for transit-oriented development. And then further on down, I believe the, where it says WAHTF is the Housing Trust Fund, the State Housing Trust Fund, Arthur, is that correct?
Correct.
So, and so there's another source, $2 million for the Imagine Housing 30 Bellevue project. And then later on, further on down in the list, you can see the tax credits. There's a big, there's a big plan for that in, for the second project, and you can see the, the percentage there. And further on down, you can see both would involve bank loans, there are some deferred developer fees, and there's some other private investment as well. And I was just very impressed when I was working on the, I was on the JRC, how many different parties have to come together, just the, just the JRC process of putting together those amounts and then the approval process that they go through. So, you know, our, you know, we, our consortium through Arch, there's a multiple steps. This, we're, we're considering approving, giving our approval for funds that we've already given to Arch, that Arch already holds, and we're just, we're just giving approval for actually spending the funds that we gave you previously. A lot of steps involved, a lot of people involved. Same thing, and probably even more people involved when it comes to the county's CDBG funds, and probably the transit-oriented development funds as well. So, it's, it's public money, it's for a very good cause, there's a lot of people involved in, and, and I, and I, I just want to highlight that, that the work it takes to oversee and to coordinate that, Arthur, your work and, and of, of your team members is very valuable, and it would take all of these players and all of these parts to bring these together. So, very much appreciate it. I think it's, though they're not being built here in Issaquah, we've been a big beneficiary of many of the work that's been done in the past. And I, I trust that there'll be opportunities in the future for us to, to also benefit within our own city, but I'm also strongly in favor of the overall gain to the region when we, when we work with other communities such as Bellevue and for, and as, you know, such as Bellevue and any of these, all these places where these projects are done. So, very much support tonight, this ask.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2017-01, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Arthur. Moving now to good of the order, you'll notice at the beginning of the meeting, we were, there are seven boxes here, so Stacy, starting with you, take a box and pass it down, and then you get that started, and then we'll go from, we'll go from there.
Mr. Mayor, I have one item while everyone's picking cookies. Could I start with that?
Of course.
Thank you.
And Mary Lou? Pardon me. As we're considering these box choices, I want you to know that this, this coming Thursday, that myself and a group of friends will be serving a meal at the Issaquah Meals Program, and if anybody wants to donate their box of cookies, I can take it there that evening. I'll gladly-
Tape together. Thanks, Paul. I wanted to talk, briefly provide a few talking points about an issue that the Cascade Water Alliance is working on now. It's a water reuse topic, and it's something you may hear about, and so I'd like to provide just some information, so you're informed when it comes up. King County has an obligation to reuse water from its wastewater treatment plant. It's required to do that, and in doing so in an area where we are water purveyors, we end up with an overlap of jurisdictions. And why would that be an issue? Primarily, it's an issue because Cascade members, which are several cities and water districts, share the cost of building, maintaining our system and building our future water system. And when a new purveyor comes into that picture, it changes how that model works. And so, typically, we do not want to have water purveyors overlapping because it can create, it can create that, that kind of a financial situation. So, in our case, Cascade right now currently has excess of supply that we have purchased from the city of Seattle. And so, we can meet some seasonal peaks, but in general, we tend to trend above what we need. If there were to be new water sources added to that in certain member areas of it, it changes the, makes some of the partners paying more and some of the partners paying less, which goes against the philosophy of why the alliance was formed. And so, Cascade is going to be working with King County on this over the next little while, and you may hear about it in the public. So, the overlapping jurisdictions, the environmental concerns with using waste, treated wastewater in irrigation or other applications, who provides for the infrastructure to, to circulate this repurposed water? How does this impact Cascade Water Alliance's long-range plans? And how do we integrate this new source into our plan? So, that's a conversation that's out there, and I just thought I'd give you a little background on it in case it comes up when you're out there. Thanks. Thanks, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else for good of the order this evening? Seeing none, then, we are adjourned.